Good evening, welcome to the Town Council Meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, the first one of the new year. Happy New Year to Wakefield. If we could stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sherri, do we have any public participation tonight?
Yes, just one.
Just one, oh, okay. So, George Sebo and Anthony Guardia, would you approach the table and state your name? And I want to hear the addresses. I'm sure they're both Wakefields, right?
I am, though.
I know the public at home wants to hear your address.
Welcome, this is...
I'm Anthony Guardia, twenty-seven Davilay.
In what town was that, George? Oh, Stonem, okay, okay. I've heard of Stonem. I've heard of Stonem. He looks familiar, but... April twentieth? Is that a home or a way game for Wakefield?
It's actually home for us.
Home for you.
Thank you. Did that on purpose because he knew us from Stonem. I talked to Anthony, I think the best way to handle it is to give Wakefield a participant award. If you people are showing up, I figure... I think that'll go a long way. Because I know you showed up last game and it was kind of lopsided the last two out of three years. I just want to make sure we make a...
Yeah, the first year I liked in particular. That was a very good year. Three years ago, we won, and then what happened the last two years?
Oh, the first year we won.
Oh, I thought it was the first year we won.
Two years ago, you won. We let you win. And then last year, we won again.
Yeah, so we didn't like last year at all, okay.
We also were awarded the Best Looking and Most Intellectual along with the participant in case that happens.
Absolutely. Because winning isn't everything.
Not at all. I just wanted to make sure of that, George.
But I'm serious, like, Anthony, you know how well Wakefield and Stonem Boys and Girls Clubs doing. It's a great fundraiser for each community, so giving each other hard time is great. And I'm always impressed with Wakefield, with Steve. You guys are rock solid with your accounts. We're trying to get up to snuff on our end, too, so just want to thank you for all the help that you give us, Steve.
Thank you.
Now, we'd love to have you April twentieth, Stonem versus Wakefield. George is the best. He's always a good sport. And I'm somewhat biased, but even with my help, Wakefield doesn't seem to do well against your team.
I think it'd be better if everybody gets a trophy, right? Do you guys want that? Does that make you feel better?
Not everyone gets a trophy.
No, not everyone gets a trophy.
Oh, okay. I didn't know you guys were playing.
Also, April twentieth, we invite you to play.
Perfect.
Thank you, we hope you'll have you. And thank you for your time. We'll get out of your way so you can get to real business.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Anthony. Thanks, George.
Eleven o'clock again?
Eleven o'clock.
Julie wanted to say one thing before you left, though, about her finger.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Sign the waivers.
There's an attorney right outside the door.
Where's Tom?
It's like twelve in there. Actually, there's three around the table.
Yeah, there you go.
Thanks very much. Great cause. Thanks, George.
Okay, moving right along. So, moving down to three, the joint meeting. Could I have Jane Good and Lorelei McKay step to the...
And Chuck Guyer.
Oh, Chuck Guyer, okay. Sorry, Chuck, I didn't see you back there. Welcome. Thanks for coming out, Nicole.
We're also joined tonight by Executive Director Sandra Gass.
Oh, good. Well, you can come up, too, if you want to pull up a chair. Oh, you're fine right there, okay. Welcome. If you could just state your names and your address.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jane Good, fifty-four Outlaw Road.
Thank you.
Chuck Guyer, forty-one Forest Road.
Lorelei McKay, one oh one Broadway.
We're here tonight to, hopefully with you, joining with you to appoint a new member to our Board of Commissioners. Right now, we're short a member, and we have Valerie Pennington, who is a resident of the Lincoln School and has been an advocate while she's been living with us to father people in the building and the people in the... in the whole place, the whole part. She does... She's actually worked for Sandra while we were doing some projects and keeping people where they should be and where they shouldn't be, and has been a huge help. Tonight's the first time I've met Valerie, but I've heard nothing but good things about her. We have heard nothing but good things about her from Executive Director and the people on our staff. So, pretty cut and dry. We have one person for one place, and you must be going to do the...
I nominate, because after finding out some things about Mrs. Pennington, she sounded great, and I think it's awesome to have someone who's living in the housing and who's been a liaison, who has advocated, be on the board. So, I nominate Valerie Pennington to fill the slot for the Wakefield Housing Authority.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ed?
I think we should just clarify for those watching. It looks like we actually had two people that did apply. One was Jean Molten, and the other was Valerie Pennington. Notwithstanding and looking at both their credentials, I think they're both very talented, clearly, and they both have connections to the town, but also the Housing Authority and issues of housing. It does appear that Valerie Pennington has been more directly involved, and it seems like she has done a lot relative to different projects going on. And so, I think that, you know, of the two, she has an advantage in that respect that I think would be beneficial to the authority. So, for that reason, I'm supporting and endorsing that vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Maureen or... Okay. So, all in favor of appointing Valerie Pennington to the Wakefield Housing Authority today?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
That was hot.
We have to go outside, that's harder.
Greetings from the former selectmen to all of you. And who is home watching us and thanking God that he's home.
We give him our love.
Do our best.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
Okay, actually, Judy's outside. Judy's coming right in now. She's watching. Come on in, Judy. So, we have Judy Luciano with the Age Friendly Community Update. If you all could just introduce yourselves, so we know who you are.
I can tell you, this is to my right here. My right.
My right, my right. That's okay, my right.
To my right.
Judy Camelia, a past member of the COA Board, but has continued to help us with the Age Friendly.
Great.
And our current Chairman of the Board, Tom Crawford.
Excellent. Welcome.
So, we're here just to give you a brief, I mean, brief update of the Age Friendly Wakefield Project. Back in September two thousand and seventeen, we came before this Board looking for your approval to proceed with membership into the Age Friendly Network of Communities. With your approval, we move forward. Steve and the Board worked on a letter of commitment to AARP and the World Health Organization. In December of two thousand and seventeen, we were notified that we were now part of the network. The members of the Age Friendly Wakefield Board, the COA Board members, these guys here, along with Steve Mayo, Kara Schalles, Diane McGrath, Paul Revis, Catherine McDonald, and I don't think I left anybody out. If I did, my apologies. So, what we did, we, to find out the needs of the town, we had a couple of public hearings, and we conducted a survey in which three hundred and forty-nine people took part. From those, we learned that people want to stay in Wakefield. They want to be able to get around. They want to maintain their property as they age. They want to downsize and live in the town. They want the community to be safe, walkable, and drivable. They want to be informed of town business. They want to socialize, participate in recreation programs, maintain the schools, and update parks. So, as we know, that's what goes on in the town. Many town committees and boards and departments are already working on these things. I do have four pages of comments that people let us know, the good, the bad, and their personal thoughts on possible improvements we could make in the town. I will send them all to you if you'd like to read them. I read them. Interesting, you know. They're good and bad. Lot of good ideas there. So, right now, what we're doing is we're working on an action plan to address the needs that people express. For example, people talked about a small home repair program. Sometime a contractor won't just come out to fix a doorknob or hang, you know, curtain rods, things like that. So, we're developing a program to address that need. We're also looking into more intergenerational programs being planned with the school and the recreation department. Diane McGrath has been very helpful in, you know, working on this aspect. We're also looking into more traveling opportunities. People said they wanted us to do more travel at the COA. We don't always have enough people to make a trip go, so we're going to combine with recreation. Diane has agreed to post trips. So, we welcome people of all ages. Also, part of being in the Age Friendly Network, we work in the community. And we had a training. We had the Alzheimer's Association come in, and they held a training for members of the business community about working with customers who have memory impairment. It was open to all businesses in town and town departments. We had a good representation from the town's DPW. They sent a lot of people, as well as police, fire, and the town's HR Department. We're also going to try and repeat that maybe next year again. We're having another presentation by, it's called a Walk in Your Shoes, which is a virtual interactive dementia training, and that will also be open to all. And we have an Aging Resource area in the library. So, it also, being part of Age Friendly, we are also available to apply for grants. Last year, a quick competitive grant came up. I called Rick Stinson. He quickly applied for something. Sadly, though, they are competitive. We didn't get it. But when opportunities come up like that, we will point them in the right direction of the right department or whoever. And so, going forward, we're planning to look at the needs and work towards our action plan. So, if anyone has any questions, we're here. We're keeping this, like I said, brief. The next time we come, we hope we have a final plan, but that'll probably be a year from now. So, just want to keep you posted, because I heard you guys say one night you have these committees, and we don't know what people have been up to. So, there's a quick...
Appreciate you.
Awesome.
...two-minute presentation. Okay?
Excellent. Is there anything else that you need from us for now, instead of, you know, the year from now? Like, I know sometimes there's items in your facility that need extra ten-eleven care or replacement.
There's all kinds. I had to take... Now, I'm going to go long if you want.
We have to, maybe not.
No. I mean, there's always things we can all look at. But I think in the... I think once we do this assessment and we look at, you know, the population and how things are changing in the town and who's moving into these, you know, new apartments and new condos, which a lot of people seem to appreciate in these surveys, people who do want to downsize are going there. So, maybe that's something to look at, but not right now.
Okay.
Maybe at the budget part, though, hearing.
Perfect.
Excellent. Okay, good.
But that's all. That's it.
Ed?
A quick question for you, Judy. Speaking of the budget part, because I was going through looking at that in anticipation of discussing tonight. Do you have a sense of how many people are currently being served by the Council on Aging and how that's changed? My sense is that it serves a larger population in recent years.
It grows in some way. It's funny. We were just looking at transportation. Now, we have a list of about a hundred and forty-some odd people use us for transportation. It comes and goes, though. Sometimes we'll have people who just have, you know, knee replacement, I need a ride. Sometimes we have people who need to ride everywhere, from the barber shop to the bank, you know, all kinds of things like that. There is one area we are looking at. We've noticed that in the housing areas, less people who live in public housing are calling us for transportation, which we find very interesting. So, we're taking the show on the road, and we're going up to Harts Hill and doing a presentation and figure out what's going on. Are they more able? Do they have more drivers up there? We don't know. So, that's something we're going to look at. So, that's just, you know, one of the areas. But needs and that type of thing, I really have to think about it.
I guess I just want to make sure that the budgeting is aligning with the need and understanding that more folks want to age in place.
Yep.
Understanding that we're talking Baby Boomers now, you know. I would imagine that the population, the percentage of our town population is...
Is changing.
Is changing, is, in some ways, is growing, you know, and...
Right.
I want to be mindful of that so that the budgeting, you know, corresponds with that in a thoughtful way.
Right. It's, you know, some people just call us with a phone call. You know, we probably have ten thousand different people call, you know, and that might be a little high. But you know what I mean, different things they call. Someone will call Young for a family member who doesn't live in this town. Is there a Council on Aging in our town? That type of stuff. So, I think this year, we're looking at it with the Age Friendly. Then I'm really going to take a look at our budget and see, you know, maybe how things could be called different things. I mean, not called different things, allocated differently, you know. So, maybe that way, I'll have to give it a good look, because this year, I kind of left it all level-funded type. Okay?
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you, Judy. You went to Wakefield one oh one. You always go, but you went, and that's a great way to talk to new folks that are moving into the community that could use our service, like, use your services. So, thank you for that. And then I was just at the library the other day, and you have a dedicated space in the magazine room about aging and...
Our Aging Resource.
Yeah, an Aging Resource Center. So, thank you, because I think you are getting the word out there about the services you provide. So, anyway, we can help you. And to promote those and get the word out, let us know.
Thank you. And that's what we tried to do, because we noticed, we go to the library, we're working with a client over there, and I noticed there were a lot of people of the age that may visit the senior center at the library, but they're not coming to the senior center. So, we said, can we have a little space here? And Catherine McDonald was very willing and held us that space there. So, we noticed it gets touched. People look at it. So, that's a good thing. Doesn't matter where, as long as they're using it.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your work.
Grabbing the cold. Mr. Gill, would you like to join us on the... The big table. The big table. These are the little tables over here. Yes, Steve.
Before Kevin sits down, I just want to say that he's going to... Kevin's going to present eighteen budgets to you this evening. These are some of the... Some of the easier budgets, I think, to just, like, to start you off early in the season with the ones a little bit more straightforward. I will say that eighteen budgets, they are being brought in at an increase over the last year of point six percent. That's point six percent. So, I'm a little disappointed that we couldn't bring that in level-funded, but I'm going to have to be happy with point six percent over the last year.
Sounds good.
So, then I'll turn it over to Kevin, and if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. And there are some department heads here as we go forward.
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. As Steve had mentioned, eighteen of the smaller budgets, up a total of nine thousand seven hundred and three dollars over last year. With that, I'll jump right in. Before we start, we do have several department heads here tonight. I will call them out as we get to their budgets. The first budget we'll look at tonight is the legal budget, Tom Mullen's budget, where recommending an increase to this budget of three thousand three hundred and six dollars. This increase is all in personal services and is for a negotiated salary increase. The major expenditures within this budget, the line items, outside professional services, sixty thousand dollars, which is used mainly for labor attorneys and outside expert services. I do want to point out, this line item in fiscal eighteen, we did need a reserve fund transfer for some ongoing litigation. That will be the same case this year. We'll either look for a reserve fund transfer or a supplemental appropriation at town meeting in the spring. Total budget request for two thousand and twenty is one hundred and eighty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
I have a motion.
I move that we accept the legal department's budget as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Next budget is the...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Sorry.
Thank you. Next budget is the election expense budget. We are requesting a decrease of nineteen thousand fifty dollars over last year's budget. This decrease is based on one election, one less election in fiscal two thousand and twenty. In fiscal two thousand and twenty, we have the presidential preference in the town election. The estimated cost of one election is twelve thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. The main expenses within this budget, the election workers of thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, advertising of five thousand dollars. The total budget request is for twenty-five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
I move that we accept the election expense budget as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Kevin, can I just double-check the advertising piece? I would assume that flows with the number of elections.
Correct.
What's encompassed in that?
That's printing the town warrant.
Nothing else?
No.
Further discussion? Anyone else? Okay, all in favor to accept the two motions?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none?
Next budget is the Finance Committee budget. We are requesting level funding. The main expenses within this budget, cost to print the town's recommendation book, use at town meeting, twenty-eight hundred dollars, and under the dues and memberships, thirty-four hundred dollars, which is the Finance Committee's portion of the MMA dues. The total budget request is seven thousand sixty dollars.
Move that we accept the Finance budget as presented.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none?
Next budget is the Conservation Commission budget. We are requesting an increase of one thousand one hundred and eleven dollars of our current year's budget. This increase is all in the tax levy portion of the budget and is all in the personal services line item. I will point out that this budget is offset by available funds, which are wetland filing fees, which is collected by the Conservation Commission. The amount for fiscal two thousand and twenty will be three thousand dollars. This department consists of two people working part-time, ten hours per week. The total budget request for fiscal two thousand and twenty is forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, with forty-two thousand seven fifty-seven coming from tax levy and three thousand coming from available funds.
Move that we accept the Conservation budget.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none?
Next budget is the Planning Board budget. We are requesting level funding. The main expenses within this budget, the cost of the clerk, forty-eight hundred dollars. We budget twenty-four meetings at two hundred dollars per meeting. The advertising line item, twenty-five hundred dollars, which is used to advertise their meetings and also if there are any bylaw changes. I will point out that this department does collect revenue. In fiscal two thousand and nineteen, year-to-date, we have collected over fifty-two hundred dollars. The total budget request for fiscal two thousand and twenty is twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Move that we accept the Planning Board's budget.
Second.
Discussion? Ed?
Just a smaller point, Kevin, but if you look at on sheet B, office supplies, it's budgeted again at twenty-five hundred. We've only spent a hundred and fifty-six dollars so far. Fiscal nineteen, twenty-five hundred was budgeted. And if you look historically, the spends weren't anywhere near twenty-five hundred. So, why is that consistently budgeted at that rate?
A couple of years ago, they needed to purchase some filing cabinets, and depending on the plans that they get, they... It may be a year or two before they need additional storage space. So, this is basically... It could be every other year or every year, depending on the plans that come into that office.
Could we not reduce that twenty-five hundred down, though? Just because, I mean, historically, they've not come anywhere. They haven't even broken two thousand. In twenty eighteen, there were... Fiscal twenty eighteen, there were only about a thousand dollars, right? And they're only at a hundred and fifty-six dollars through Christmas of last of eighteen. I mean, it's not a huge dollar amount, but I just don't know, like, why are we just consistently budgeting that's not in line with what they've actually spent?
Paul?
I just want to add on this, and maybe I can get the answer through either Kevin or Steve. Steve, who does the... When they get a... If we present bylaws to the Planning Board for approval, who pays for the posting in the paper? Does it go back to the FinCom? Or does the cost come out of Planning Board?
I think the Planning Board will pay for their meetings, but if there are bylaw changes, it becomes part of the town meeting warrant, so it would go through the Town Council.
I think there would be... On advertising, there would be advertising at the Planning Board level, because they have to have a public hearing and they have a line item for that. And we would also advertising at town meeting, because we have to print that warrant as well.
And the Planning Board notifies the butters within the three hundred-foot range, correct, to start the applicant?
That's different than a bylaw change.
But it's another cost, though, that we're going to advertising, right?
I think that we're talking about office supplies.
Oh, I thought it was advertising.
No.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I will point out, on office supplies, in fiscal seventeen, we spent eighteen hundred and ten dollars last year. On fiscal eighteen, it was a thousand seventy-seven. So, as in most budgets, there is some fluctuation. And depending on, you know, the amount of plans that are coming into the Planning Board, if they get a big development come in before them, the plans are pretty extensive that they need someplace to file them away.
I guess it's less about this dollar amount, because this dollar amount obviously isn't significant, but it's more just about the philosophy of, should we continue to be budgeting that is not in line with what the actual spend has been over the last several, you know, fiscal years? And I think this is an example of, it seems like we could probably dial that down a bit and still be true to what has happened historically. I mean, again, for the current fiscal year, we've only, about halfway through, but we've only spent a hundred and fifty-six bucks. So, we're looking at three hundred and twelve dollars if you were to double that, you know, and we're budgeting twenty-five hundred. It's not this dollar amount that I'm focused on. It's more just the philosophy of trying to better align. I know we talk about, on the other end, snow, making sure that snow is a truer representation of what the cost would be in a given year. I don't know. Are there ways that, this being one example, on a smaller scale, the ways we can maybe rethink the way we approach that, so that we're focused more on what the actual spend has been, rather than just keep, you know, having the same, you know, dollar amount dropped in each year?
Okay, Steve?
I think we do look at that every... We do look at it every year. Maybe it's every other, every two or three years, and some of these smaller ones. The key is, though, and I get your point, it does all roll back to the general fund at the end of the year. So, we'll certainly keep that in consideration if that still keeps going, particularly with things, plans being more digitized now, and the storage is going to be any less. So, point well taken.
Okay. So, with the current, yeah, with the current... Do we have a motion on that?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so with the current motion, do we...
All in favor?
Want to move, yeah, move forward on the Planning Board, number fourteen?
We'll all let back. Next year.
Yeah, next year, so. All in favor of the current budget?
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks, Ed.
Next budget is the Board of Appeals budget. We are recommending level funding. Main expenses within this budget is the cost of their meetings. We budget a cost of five hundred dollars per hearing. We budget fifty hearings a year. We also add three hundred dollars in for office supplies. We are requesting for fiscal two thousand and twenty, a budget of twenty-five thousand three hundred dollars.
I move that we accept the Board of Appeals I move that we accept the board of appeals budget.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none?
Next budget is the fire alarm budget. We have Randy Hudson here tonight from the Wakefield Fire Department. Randy is in charge of our fire alarm budget. Randy and his crew does, they do a great job. We're recommending an increase over last year of $5,225. We increased the personal services line item, $1,225, which is a 3% increase. And we increased materials and supplies, $4,000. Talked with Randy quite a bit, uh, with the, with the, with regards to this department. They have been very busy due to the ongoing development here in town. They've been doing a lot of utility changeovers on the poles. They've also been repairing and fixing or purchasing new traffic and dispatch equipment. The, this department also maintains the town's traffic signals at the various intersections in town. The municipal fire alarm circuits, which also includes master boxes at private businesses. The private businesses that do have master boxes, they do get a, a benefit on their insurance for having those master boxes. But the town also does charge a fee, $225 per block. And we collect approximately $30,000 a year. The total budget request for fiscal 2020 is $63,515. And again, Randy's here for any, uh, specific questions with regards to, uh, ongoing, uh, issues in town.
I move that we accept the fire alarm traffic signals budget.
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion? Tony?
Question is directed toward Randy. I think you discussed last year about raising some of the fees for these master boxes. $2.25 is basically the average that everybody's charging. So kind of right line, the highest one is about $3.50 and the lowest is about $200. I'm just looking at, with all the development going on in town, all the projects and all the proposed projects, that even if we went up 10%, let's say to like $250, every dime that we, or every dollar we collect from the developer that wants to do business will come into this town, keeps a dollar into town's taxpayers. So I would like to see that maybe increased, even if it goes up to $250. I can hear you fine. No, no, I totally agree with you. Let's, I'd like to see maybe even just a 10% increase to bring it to $250. And again, just bring some of that money and some of that revenue back into the... Thanks for the work you do.
This question I'm going to direct to Randy. Randy, could you answer a question for me, please? The signals that are on all of those traffic lights for first responders, makes the white light go off? Are they, are all, is the ambulance department required to use them at every satellite that they go to? How does that work? Vernon should do, Vernon is, is inactive stuff there, correct? On that Vernon and water? They always go to the ne, to the next one? What means? One of those signals?
You know, is, is something they call a counter in the intersection?
Right. Who, who makes the determination to put satellite?
Julie, yes?
The traffic signals are under this budget. Are the pedestrian signals that are, that are the number of the ones I think in the last year around town that have, that are in the... I was wondering this question as well, and are you seeing increases?
Um, those are not, no, that's DPW, I believe.
I just have one comment. When we get the calls on, on weekends that the lights are down or the lights are out or they're waking at water and main, which always seems to be the case of water and main. I go to Randy, he hits right out there. Randy, I do appreciate the great service.
Yeah, thank you. And, um, I apologize. Last, um, last month or so, we've really been hit hard on intersections. I know it's a pain in the neck when they're on flash, so, um, we're trying. And I think a big part of this is increasing the material part of it. So we have stock on the shelves that we can get out there quickly.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
All in favor of the budget?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thanks, Randy.
Next budget is the council on budget. We're requesting level funding. Services provided by, the services provided by this department, we contracted out as of 2015. We contract this out with the Commonwealth of Mass, the Division of Safety. The annual cost is $3,000. We do collect revenue in this budget. Fiscal 18, we collected over $5,300. The total budget request for 2020 is $6,000.
I move that we accept the town sealer budget.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Does the council have any issue with, I'm thinking about consolidating some of these budgets and putting this in the town council budget? It's a contract, we contract this out to the state, it's not an extra. It's not a department, I think maybe next year for consolidation, it's a...
I move that we accept the animal inspector budget.
Second.
Questions, comments?
How is the animal inspector and parking clerk, how are the, these departments connected?
We have a chief town administrator that had them in the duties. They also share space.
And then the, the, the role of animal inspector, who, who does that person report to?
Generally to me, town administration.
All in favor of the animal inspector?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none?
The next budget is the parking clerk budget. This increase is under materials and supplies, for office supplies, for certain vehicles. Main expenses within this budget, $4,000 for parking and binding, which is used to parking tickets. $4,500 under professional services. We have a county uses a company called Complus Gator to track, you got to pay parking tickets. They send out free mailers and they also provide registration at the registered motor vehicle. All other costs, $1.75. We collect on average between $70,000 and $80,000 a year.
I move that we accept this budget, the parking clerk budget with discussion?
And, do you have a second?
Second.
Yes, Anne?
So at some point, Steve, I think in the next year or so, we should re, look at, with all the, the, um, parking committee and us taking a look at how we can manage the downtown parking, I think we need to take a good look at, um, what we want a parking clerk to do and how aggressive... I, you know, I, I've been saying this for, for years, that going around to different towns, there are different mechanisms to make sure people are only there for 15 minutes or only there for an hour. And, um, I'm in, up in Andover lot and they, there's a woman in a golf cart. And people are terrified. They do not, after 15 minutes, they're moving because she's around and she's marking. You know, and if you're going to dinner, there's the two-hour slot, there's, there's several different options. And I do think, um, and I know you've, the parking committee's talking about it. And at that point, I think we need to relook at the parking clerk and see...
Right, because this is not an enforcement officer.
Right.
This is, this is hearings and...
That's right.
Paying and what have you.
But then, yeah.
But then, no, an expansion, yeah.
Right.
Does that fall under?
That's right.
Here or to the police, there's a lot of discussions.
Yep, absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
Good.
On the 48 hours, I was, you're stealing my thunder, I wanted to give the final recommendations and have a vote on just that for next week. So, Julie?
No, I, I definitely agree with Anne, and I would just say, you said the downtown, I'm hearing similar complaints.
Yeah.
In grievance, yeah.
Business.
I, I know that's, you, you meant that.
So business area, I meant.
All over, all over Wakefield.
We love to point the finger at each other, businesses.
Definitely, that's a, that's a high priority to, uh, keep the businesses happy, keep people moving in and out of the businesses and not camping out all day for, taking the trains and buses for eight or 10 hours.
Or the employees parking.
Or the employees that are parking there. Sometimes the employers are saying, go ahead, park there. So, yeah, duly noted. Ed?
I've actually had some discussions with, with the chief on, on this point because it's something that has been an ongoing issue. I think one of the challenges that we run into with it is, right now, we don't have an enforcement mechanism because, um, we don't have meters, for example, or we don't have, um, those, um, app, in-app. Or we don't have those kiosks where you can put in your license plate. I'm not even saying it has to be charged, but we don't have any sort of mechanism. So when the police are coming by, there's no way of, you know, being able to, to identify short of, I, I spoke to the chief just this afternoon about this. There's, uh, short of having a, a, a little notepad, writing down license plates in a time, there's no way for our, our police to be able to do that. You know, obviously, if, if there's an officer that is there and sees a car there all day, that's an easy one, but that's not the case. They do try to do enforcement now. The enforcement that they do do is, is somewhat sporadic in that they get called away on more important things. And, and, and I understand that. I also don't think that parking enforcement is a good use of the talents of our officers or our tax dollars. Because I think it, it's, from a resources perspective, I think to allocate resources to police officers to be taking their time, to be checking to see if someone's parked for over two hours, doesn't make a lot of economic sense. So I'd, I'd much rather see a situation whereby we have someone who could be in a position that would more than pay for himself or herself to be able to do that. And also, we have to determine, it's part of the downtown, you know, planning and discussion, a mechanism by which that person can do their job. Because if we don't have some sort of way of them being able to know when a car has arrived into a spot, there's no way to be able to ticket. And, and so that's kind of the, it's like, hopefully a two-part approach to the, to trying to solve this problem. So, um, I think there is, it does need to be some discussion, but I, this is not going to be, this is not going to fix all of the parking issues, but I don't think there's, what is one, you know, silver bullet to all this. But even if it addresses 30% or 40% of the parking concern, that's a whole, that's, it's a huge deal from where we are currently. So I really think that, kind of thinking about that in a more systemic way of, it's not just hiring someone, but also giving them the tools and taking it off, you know, o, o, off, off the police because it doesn't make economic sense to be doing that. And they're, they're, they're trained and they're skilled and we need them, you know, in, in much different capacities than, than writing tickets, from my perspective.
Agreed, thanks, Anne. Tony?
Yeah, we, we need a parking clerk. I've done a little research with this and what I've seen that, uh, parking clerks do a part of is just walk up and down the street with an iPad in video mode. And then you have the record, you have the plate, and you have the record of the time they've been there. So, kind of did a little research on this, but something...
But meters and kiosks, I think, are a great idea. Lovely towns have them.
Not in favor?
I'd do kiosks, I would do a meter. I mean, there's a whole complement of things that we can do. You know, I mean, it's, this technology is, is, is almost endless in that way. I mean, ideally, you can scan plates and then maybe you can scan plates, register the time in. I mean, that would be one way. I'm sure the technology is, is coming if it's not already there, but I think there's a lot of ways. We just have to be really open-minded about how we approach it. Not just about charging people, that's not what I'm suggesting, but I'm suggesting just being able to know how to keep those spots turning.
Right, and I think we have all the information we need now, just compile that, we all can take a look, see what's best for all of us that we think are, it's just, how's the time? It's not like next year or 10 years from now. We need to put some, um, action forward.
Just real, uh, quickly, uh, we have compiled much of the same information that you are bringing up, all of you right now, during the time of the committee. So there's a lot of it there that we have to go over and present back to this board and make the recommendations. If you think it should be a different way or a better way, great, at that time, we should, we'll just make it happen at that point. But I do agree with you. You may need someone other than a police officer going the routes on there, even if it's a part-time person doing it. I love the idea with the golf cart. I really do.
Terrified of her.
The, the kiosks are an option too, the, the little pedestals. Those are an option, whether or not, but there's still, we've, we've discussed many avenues in, in, in this respect. And we'll be glad to present them when Mr. May...
Sounds good.
Is ready to do so.
Right, I think we, I think we have the information, I think we just need to look at it and figure out and make a decision, not, not just sit on it any longer. It's been way too long. I'm sure all of us have had yearfuls, whether phone calls or just the business owners or, um, the merchants just being tired of same old story. No one seems to take any action. I think we can do it. So, okay, any other discussion?
Do you have a motion in the floor, Mr. Chelmsford?
We do.
We do, yeah. So all in favor of the parking clerk, number 24?
All opposed? Hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Yell, thanks for being so patient while we discussed this.
I also want to thank Kenny for his help on both of this budget.
Thank you very much, Kenny.
Thank you for both.
That's all you do.
The next budget is the council on aging budget. Judy Luciano is here. Judy does a great job with the seniors. We are recommending this budget be increased $9,859. This increase is all in the personal services and, uh, contractual and negotiated increases. The expense portion of this budget is level funded. The main expenses within this budget, the oil and additives line item, which is gas for the senior being, $7,800. And the line item for Mystic Valley Services, which is used for meals on wheels and for in-home care. And the amount is $6,275. The fiscal 2020 budget request is $245,272.
I move that we approve the council on aging budget.
I second that.
Discussion? Comments? Ed?
The only thought I have is, um, what I mentioned to Judy earlier. I just want to make sure that, um, that, I'd like to know some, some harder numbers in terms of how many people, you know, council on aging touches within the community. It's easier with the school budgets, for example, because we can quantify student populations, so we know exactly and we understand ratios and the like. Here, I think it's a little bit harder. I ju, I just want to make sure that, that we don't have a growing population, that, you know, the cost per resident is, is, is not going down, you know, because of that. With the level funding, I love level funding, um, but I just want to make sure that we're, we're keeping the proportions appropriate. And it sounds like you'll, that's something you'll, you'll work on Judy.
It's something we look at and we do have a report I do at the end of year. It's something we do at the end of the year for the state, I do a state report for them. I, I brought that with me, sorry about that. But I let you know, but like I said, also, I work with Betsy trying to get an idea on the census, how many people over the age of 60 are moving in. I do know our mailing list has skyrocketed because we do mail five times a year, so we've gone... gone from thirty-five hundred at a mailing, and that's doubling up, you know, husband wives, couples. Um, we're up over four thousand now, we do about forty-two hundred. So, you know, it has changed.
That's part of my concern, that, that we're, that the, the, the dollars per, you know, uh, per resident are, are potentially diminishing, you know, and if it's a need shifting, then it's a need shifting, but it might be the case.
Right. And I look at it that way, because we get a, um, grant through the state, so I'm always looking at that number, because that's what pays for the mailing of the newsletter that does.
Great.
Okay? Thank you.
Okay, so the Council on Aging, we have both motions. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none.
The next budget is the recreation budget. We have Dan McGrath here. Uh, Dan is the recreation director. We are requesting an increase over last year of five thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. This increase is all in the personal services line item and is for contractual and negotiated increases. Uh, this budget, the fees from this budget are returned to the general fund from fees charged to the people that come and do the activities and programs with the recreation department. The total budget request for two thousand twenty is one hundred and five thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars.
Move that we accept the recreation budget.
Second.
Uh, Dan, why don't you come on for a second? I know Tony's gonna ask you a question, so instead of having the mic.
Whole bunch of questions.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Tony, I know you.
I can't really throw you under the bus, Dan, because I kind of recommended hiring you five years ago. Um, just real quick, you do a heck of a job, and, you know, I've, I've seen that pickleball crowds just get bigger and bigger and bigger. Um, there's been a lot of talk, and we, I talked about it, uh, on my last year at recreation, about an ADA accessible swing. Where are we with that?
So, we've had conversations with the, um, disability commission, um, on how to go about doing this the right way. So, this isn't a handicap swing that we're looking at, this is a wheelchair accessible swing.
Right.
Very big difference. All of our parks have handicap swings. This is to serve a population who.
Doesn't.
Isn't able to enjoy our playgrounds. Um, so we're in discussions to do that. So, these apparatus can, can vary in price. We can go from something that's a couple thousand dollars to something that's tens of thousands of dollars. So we need to find, in my opinion, first, the right location that has plenty of space where you have the, the frontage in the back that you need for, for this particular swing. We also need to have the proper surfacing.
Sure.
That, I think, is gonna be our big cost. Um, if we're doing wood chips, it just doesn't work.
No.
Okay? So what, if, my recommendation would be some sort of poured rubber.
Yep.
Now, when we do that as well, we also need to think of, you know, how do we maintain this? That stuff, when it starts to rip, it goes, it's gone, and it's expensive to fix. So, these are things that we need to think about. Um, I plan to meet with, with my, actually, I meet with my board tomorrow night, this is one of the things we want to discuss. Um, we want to meet with Dennis Fazio in the spring to see where we can go with this, get some cost estimates, and make this reality. In my priorities of, of the new year, and I do this every year, that's second on my list. You know, number one is getting my gym floor done at the civic center. We know that we can get that done.
Yep.
This is number two on the list, this is high priority for us.
Good. And if you need help from this board, um, let us know.
Thank you.
If you need a few extra dollars, I'm sure Steve can find some under his couch, um, we'll help you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Appreciate it.
His couch at work, or his couch at home?
It's an awfully big couch.
There's no, there's no couch at work.
Julie.
Fill him, fill him.
Dan, you're, you're doing great things. I, I just have a logistical question, so, I mean, there's no money under things like advertising and recreational, um, recreational supplies, and, and I'm sure it takes some of those things, is that just coming out of a different budget, or?
It all, it all comes out of programming.
So all comes, so everything then is under materials and?
Yep. We get what we need.
Is it, all the money here is under personal services?
There's a revolving account for programs, programs and activities, which is separate from this budget. So the fees that are collected, a portion of that, those fees offset, offsets this budget here, Dan's budget.
Okay.
Those funds come back to the general fund. The balance of that revolving account is used to fund the various programs and activities. So we hire the, the people that, that run the activities and also any supplies and services that are needed.
And do we get any accounting of that at the, I'm just under, being my first year, I'm just trying to understand process. Do we see that at the end of the year, or how, or that just goes into the general funds? And it's just?
It, it, it stays within that revolving account.
Okay.
Um, for, for the next year. Usually, at the end of the fiscal year, there, there's a balance of maybe ten or fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
Which is used to seed the next fiscal year.
Is that something, Steve, that we would eventually see in the open checkbook concept?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions? Paul?
Just real quick, um, I'm all in favor of that swing, uh, we talked about that maybe five years ago, and you're right, the cost can be relatively low. Though when we looked at that then, eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Because the way to mount that to the ground was very extensive.
Yep.
Because you can't have that tip in any fashion.
Right.
I mean, the piping was huge.
Yep.
Um, all the support in the world.
Thank you.
If we can get that done, that'd be a great, great asset, because a lot of people are asking for it.
Yep. Yeah, and those, again, you know, I'm all about kids.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's everything that, that I do. If there is a child who can't play because of whatever reason, the goal is to find the reason to do it and get it done.
Good, very good. Thank you.
The passion shows. It's good, no, it's really good. Hear me?
Yeah, I just want to echo, you do a great job. I just, um, can you, we don't get to see you a lot, can you tell us about some of your popular programs in the last year? Because you tried some new stuff.
Yeah.
And I, actually, I know they weren't kids-focused, so for me, the adult stuff that you successfully did, can you just talk about that and what you're gonna continue?
I mean, pickleball's kind of the, the big thing. I, I've, in fifteen years of public recreation, I've never seen anything explode like this. You know, when I was getting into it, everybody used to say, oh, lacrosse is the fastest upcoming sport, and it is. Pickleball is way beyond what lacrosse was, and it's not even remotely close. We now offer that five days a week. We do that every morning, um, you know, on Mondays and Wednesdays, open play from nine to one for literally anybody. Um, Tuesdays and Thursdays, we do more kind of level play. You know, we used to do it under, you know, beginners, advanced beginners, intermediates, but that became kind of, you know, well, I think on this and, but they say on that. So we made it into, you know, casual fun recreational play or challenging play. And you do, you go to what you want to go to. You know, if you want a game, go to challenging. If you're just there just to have a good time, come to the, you know, fun play. That's, I mean, that's the biggest thing. I even took a lesson last Tuesday. You know, we, we're doing pickleball lessons on Tuesday mornings, and I'm sitting saying, I, this is here every day, we're, 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 we're all invested in this, let me go and take a lesson, because we offer it. Honest to God, it was one of the most fun things I have done in, you know, in, in my years of, of athletics. I had an absolute blast. I was sore as heck the next day, um, and actually, I can't wait to do class number two tomorrow. So, that's one of the big ones that we've, that we've done, and I can only see that getting bigger. Um, if I had more space, now that I'm asking for it, but if I had it, honestly, we could fill it. Um, there's a huge demand for outdoor courts. You know, people are asking, they're begging, they want them.
What kind of grounds do you need for an outdoor court?
Like a tennis court. You know?
Like the ones by the lake.
Like the ones by the lake, or, or Moulton, or wherever we decide at some point if we can do it.
Right.
That demand is there. Um, I've never seen anything like this in, in recreation, and probably in my next however many years until I, you know, venture off and, and to retirement, I don't think I'll ever see anything like this again. It's that big. And I, and I really, I'd love to see you guys come down and, and play someday, because it's an absolute blast.
Julie's been.
I, Julie has been there, I know that.
I have been there, I took a lesson, it's amazing.
It's a blast.
I really thought you were gonna go with goat yoga.
Goat yoga's coming back though. We are doing it again. Yep, yep, they're coming back in the spring, we're actually, uh, we're talking, so when we did it for free, it was great. Now that we gotta pay this, you know, what we have to charge residents or anybody who signs up for the class, it's, uh, we're in a little bit of negotiation to try, try and get that price down, because it's, those goats aren't cheap, I guess.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
We'll store it at my house if you need to.
Uh, that's, listen, these, I don't know what these things are, but, there.
That was pretty funny.
That, that was a star, it was a good time. Yep. And every, we get, I mean, again, we had that program. Um, I think that day, we had fifty folks sign up for two different sessions, but we had a waitlist of eighty-five.
That's nice.
You know?
That's great.
Again, maybe because it was free, but I think it was also the experience. So, it was very cool, and that will absolutely be back.
I try to pull swings and have, uh, my wife pull, no way.
Maybe this time.
Pull a couple of strings.
Okay, on the twenty-eighth, the tennis folks will be in, know that, right?
Oh, yeah.
Since you're giving away the courts, and they'll be in here.
I'm not giving away anything yet.
No.
They'll never touch garbage.
They already know.
Yeah, those courts aren't.
Okay, um, any other comments? All in favor of the recreation budget?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. You were opposed.
No, I wasn't opposed, no. I want to say a couple of things that.
Thank you, dude.
Not only does Dan handle the recreation, but he also manages the civic center and does a great job with that as well.
Great, thank you, Dan.
I want to thank him for that, and I think that what the, what the public to know is the synergy that we have between our department heads, between Dan and Judy, does a great job too. Judy, I'm sorry, I didn't say that when you were up there, but I'm glad you didn't leave. It's a great job senior center, and how they work together and how we work together with the school department, the after-school program, the Boys and Girls Club, um, with, um, what's the, the academy?
Wakefield.
The Wakefield Academy, uh, with the veteran services. This is, these are, are great, great people that work together and, and really give the, the taxpayer and residents and our guests the best bang for the buck, so I want to thank all of you for how hard you work. Appreciate it.
Okay, Dan?
Did you vote on that?
We did, yep.
Okay, awesome.
Uh, next budget is the veteran services budget. Uh, we're requesting an increase, I'm sorry, we have Karen Burke here. Uh, Karen is the veteran service director for the town of Wakefield. Uh, she's part of the, uh, municipal agreement that we have with Melrose, Wakefield, and Saugus. Uh, we share Karen's services. Uh, we also have a dedicated veteran service officer, specifically for Wakefield. Um, for the two thousand twenty budget, we are recommending an increase of one thousand thirty-three dollars. This increase breaks down four hundred and twenty-six dollars for personal services, which is a contractual and negotiated increase. Uh, there's an increase in contracted services, six hundred and seven dollars, which is all in the professional services line item, to be part of the municipal, uh, district. The main expenses under this budget, the, under contractual services, the professional services line item, forty-nine thousand nine oh nine, which is the cost to be the member for Wakefield to be part of the district. The recipient line item, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is used for veterans' benefits. I will point out that the town does receive up to seventy-five percent reimbursement from the state. In fiscal nineteen, we anticipate a reimbursement of approximately a hundred thousand dollars. The two thousand twenty budget request is two hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred and eight dollars.
I move that we accept the veteran services budget as presented.
Second. Questions, comments?
I think, uh, so much of the concern that I raised about the senior center, I just, I'm interested in if we have a sense of how many veterans, uh, we currently touch, you know, today and how that number may have changed in, in recent years. I just want to be sure that the funding, you know, is, is commensurate with the number of veterans that would be in need of services.
We get the primary number through the census, and we work with outreach to try and capture the veterans who need our assistance, which is where that budget line comes from. Seems consistently to ebb and flow that a couple of people leave, they move to different communities, they move to assisted living facilities, and they switch to federal-type funds, and as a couple leave, a couple more come in. So we consistently in Wakefield seem to stay between about twenty and twenty-five veterans who are in need of services, which is where that line item comes from, the hundred and seventy thousand, and that's the reimbursable benefit that we get from the state called chapter one fifteen.
Do you, do you have any concerns about, um, not enough veterans seeking out services that are available? Because I know that, you know, oftentimes, that's, there can some, almost be a stigma associated with that, um, you know?
It's always an underlying concern, but I think we do a good job of making it a friendly place to come. It's in the Council on Aging, so it's, it's fairly private for young veterans to come in as well. Hector's doing an amazing job utilizing different resources throughout the community to bring in some of our younger veterans and capture them. Word of mouth within the senior center also helps to capture some of our people in housing or, you know, somebody new, and they, they feel comfortable to come and talk to us about applying for VA benefits or coming in for chapter one fifteen benefits, or just to generally talk about what's out there for them as veterans or express their concerns. So we try through outreach, through our events, to make sure we're always present and through our Facebook presence, but really, it's been word of mouth and just being there consistently that people know to come find us at the Council on Aging and they, they stop in. So it's a very trusting group, um, and Hector's done an amazing job capturing some of the younger veterans and linking them up with some services at the VA that I think they very desperately needed.
Then the other piece was, is the met, specifically the mental health component Then the other piece was, is the, specifically the mental health component of that, do you believe that we, as a community, are offering sufficient services now? Is there anything we can do to improve that aspect of it?
I think we are. I think it's just getting them access to either the VA at Bedford or the Boston system or through using other programs that are available, such as the Home Base Program, which offers substance abuse and mental health counseling for veterans and just knowing who to reach out to to link them to those services. So if they're meeting the needs, it's just making sure that they continue to know that we're there for them.
Great. Further questions, comments? All in favor?
I just want to thank Karen for everything you do for our veterans and for your service at the Air Force.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think people should know that there's the, also, wait, is it every, when does the food drop off at the town?
Oh, yes, every month we do.
Every monthly?
Veteran food drive.
Setting food pantry.
It's actually Wednesday this month, this coming Wednesday, but we provide food to over 200 families across six communities, and Wakefield gets food every month for that. Hector comes to Melrose and picks it up and brings it back, and that's something that we always are advertising at the Council on Aging, and any veteran that we see, we make sure they know about it, and the food pantry also shares our cards with people so we can share it with them if they're coming to the food pantry and they are a veteran and they're eligible to have another round of food every month through our Veterans' Food Market. And we did a turkey dinner with Thanksgiving in addition to the food drive for that month, so we make sure we do offerings as well. Hector worked with the Rotary Club this Christmas time to offer a Market Basket Holiday Card to all the Chapter 115 recipients to give them a little extra help over Christmas, and those were funds donated by the Rotary Club.
Okay.
Great. Great.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, all in favor of the veteran services budget?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, everybody, very much for your time.
Hey, streetlights. I've been waiting for this one.
The next budget is the streetlight budget. We recommend level funding. There are approximately 23 hundred streetlights in the town of Wakefield. The total budget request is $188,131.
Move that we approve the streetlight budget.
Second.
Questions, comments?
So, I know we've had discussions, and the streetlights in town have been changed to higher efficiency LEDs. By the way, Field Municipal Gas and Light Department, there's a lag, I think, in probably seeing some of the benefits of that because it was grant-funded, but I do hope, and I've asked Steve to make sure that we kind of are tracking that and know when those savings will be passed on to the town.
Yes.
And I've had no dissuasion from Steve.
Absolutely not.
But it is good that all lights have been changed out.
Yes.
I think a few decorative ones that I think still need to be changed out, but in general, we really are ahead of the, you know, or at least on par with most cities in the Commonwealth on changing LEDs, so.
Good.
Good question for Steve. Is this one of these budgets we would roll in to some other budgets?
I don't think I would on this one. It's, I think I'd like to let this one stand alone.
I guess maybe, Steve, with optimized efficiency and all the grant money, et cetera, when all is said and done, what are we looking at in terms of ultimate savings? Your fiscal 2017, we're at about $213,000. This year, we're budgeting about $188,000.
Which is much the same we did last year.
Right, exactly. So do you have a sense, you know, is there a sweet spot we're going to end up getting to with this, or do you think we're at where? Are we at peak?
I thought, frankly, it would get down, depending, everything being equal, who knows what's going to happen with the cost of energy. I would say in the $160,000 range.
Yes, what was the, the light department, the Wakefield Light Department, did have to put up some funds to, on the switch over. Once they recapture those funds, which, talking with Mark Cousins, the financial person over there, he said it was going to be a course of seven years that they were going to recapture the cost of putting in these lights, then more cost savings will be passed on to the town in the $20,000, $20,000 to $30,000 range. So going from $188,000 down to $150,000, $160,000.
Ready to light? Further questions, comments?
Nope.
Okay, all in favor of the speedlight budget, number 36.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none?
Next budget is the historical commission budget. We are requesting level funding. Main expenses within this budget, $1,030 for printing, which is used to advertise their meetings, and $500 for other materials and supplies, which is used for signage, repair, and upgrades. Total budget request is $2,000.
Move that we accept the historical commission budget.
Second. Discussion?
Actually, I just have a quick question. As you said, printing to advertise, are we consistently calling advertising advertising? Or are there places where we're calling advertising printing?
This is the one area where this budget is so small that.
And I understand, and I'm not, yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of where.
Right, we didn't want to specifically put it all in advertising because if they didn't have something to advertise.
So it would have limited their flexibility?
Exactly.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the historical commission budget?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? Thank you. Unemployment.
Next budget is the unemployment budget. We are recommending level funding. This budget is split $25,000 for the town, $50,000 for the schools. The total budget request is $75,000.
Move that we accept the unemployment budget.
Second. Questions, comments on the unemployment budget?
Looking at this, Kevin, too, again, the same philosophy of are we over-budgeting here and looking at the actual expenditure for '17, we're at $14,500. Fiscal '18, we're only at $1,100. I realize that we consistently are budgeting $25,000, but even looking at our current fiscal year, if you double what we've paid to date, it's only $12,000.
Right.
I mean, if you average those, I mean, we're well under $10,000 a year, but we're budgeting $25,000, does it make sense to?
What tends to happen is there will be a surplus on the town side, but usually if there's a surplus on the town side and the school goes over their unemployment, that it would eat up the balance that's there. So there's the flexibility there. It's the unemployment budget, but it covers both the town and the schools. We were just putting an amount for each town side. We have a town side and a school side. We just wanted to track it that way to see if we could limit the amount of claims on both sides. So if we were going to decrease the town side, we would increase the school side.
Yeah, and looking at it, I mean, it seems like the school side, I mean, it was over what was budgeted in fiscal '17 and '18, so it'd be slightly over, but I'm just wondering if that's what the historical trend has been, does it make?
It fluctuates that you could have one or two claims on the town side and that number would shoot right up. So fortunately, on the town side, we haven't had that really in the past couple of years, but we've had it in the past.
I guess, I'm just looking at just the true numbers going back to fiscal '17.
Correct.
You know, the school department has consistently been over the $50,000.
Right.
The town as a whole has been consistently under the $50,000.
Right.
Does it make more sense so that it's really more of a truer accounting of where the unemployment dollars are, earmarked to, to shift more to the school perhaps, if that is reality, and pull some from the town?
Well, if this budget does get exhausted, we do charge, and the school is the culprit, we do charge that amount back to the school department budget because they have budgeted line items for people that they have let go, so there would be a surplus there that they would be able to handle that within their budget, so.
The thing is, it only takes a couple of claims and then you kind of bump over.
I get it, I just think if we're, if these budgets are more reflective of what the reality has been historically, I think we're doing a little bit more on-point budgeting than just having these placeholders that then become shifting dollars, you know, between different departments. And your point six could actually be even lower, Steve.
I know, I know, I was thinking of that, too. Perfection's the enemy of the good, my mother always tells me, so.
Yes, it is. Love that saying.
But we do manage this very closely, and we work with the schools, and we challenge a lot of the claims, so perhaps that's another reason why they're a little bit lower than we thought. Right now, it always wins.
And it does get put back to the right department at the end of the day.
Right, we'll go back to the general fund at the end.
Okay, so all in favor of the unemployment budget, number 41?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none?
The next budget is the reserve fund budget. We are requesting level funding. This budget is used for unforeseen, unbudgeted, or under-budgeted expenses in emergencies. The total budget request is $300,000.
Move that we accept the reserve fund budget.
Second. Questions, comments on the reserve fund budget? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the reserve fund budget, number 42?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none? Professional medical.
Last budget is the professional medical budget. We are recommending an increase of $1,000. This $1,000 will break down $500 to the tax levy and $250 each to the water and sewer enterprise accounts. This budget is used mainly for new hire physicals, but it also includes the mandatory Department of Transportation physicals for employees that have CDL licenses. If an employee is hurt and needs a return-to-work physical, it will come out of this budget. The total budget request for fiscal 2020 is $10,850, with $8,350 coming from tax levy, $1,250 from the water enterprise, and $1,250 from the sewer enterprise.
Move that we accept the professional medical budget.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none?
With that, we are done.
Great.
Excellent.
Kevin, thank you.
Thank you all.
I think it was record time, too. We clocked you in records.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I need a motion for the traffic advisory recommendation for the handicap parking space to be installed in front of the 68 Bennett Street location.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the traffic advisory recommendation for the handicap parking spot to be installed in front of 68 Bennett Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask you a question on that? I just want to, I think it's important that we do this.
Sure.
I was just wondering what the monitoring or the mechanism that was in place, so say this family were to relocate, so we know that the sign is not needed in that particular location, do we have a process in place?
We will, the, both the handicap commission and the traffic advisory committee actually has a history of removing them when that does happen, so we do go out and review them.
Yeah, yep.
So it's logged somewhere in a way to make sure that it's not there unnecessarily if the family were to relocate.
Right, and the other thing, this is for the entire, I mean, although one person may use this more than others, this is for the entire, this is a public space, so it's for anybody.
Right.
And they, people understand that.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? Thank you. Steve, did you want to talk on the bid acceptance at Humphrey Street and LaSalle Street?
Yeah, very briefly, the board did vote, I think back in July or August, to go out to do a bid on a very small, non-buildable piece of property on the corner of Humphrey Street and LaSalle. In fact, the bid was made that way, that this was non-buildable, could not be used to create a lot or split with a lot to create any other buildable lots, and occasionally we get these items, and we do have to go out to bid because they are tax titled, and they are mainly neighbors that want to expand their property. In this case, the woman who owns the property has told me that she wants to put her dogs in there and pen her dogs in there. It is a piece of property that actually my kids years ago used to go sledding on, a little very hill across the street from us. We did receive one bid for $3,500 after it was duly advertised and what have you, and I would recommend that we do grant the bid to Christina Sansonito and get the property back on the rolls.
And actually, I've seen the property too, and there's really not much to it.
And one, one last, one last thing, I forgot. Whenever we do go out to bid, actually prior to going out to bid, what our mechanism is that we actually send the description of the property, copy of the assessor's card, picture if I've been out there, to all of the town departments to see, does DPW need it for pumping stations someday? Is it conservation land, which it is not? Does the building department see any use for it? Does the planner see any, you know, greater use for it? And this, in all cases here, and actually before we would have gone out to bid, all of those departments came back and saw no town use for the property before we sold it. Here, it's just to clean up a corner and what have you.
Right, great. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none? Should we put her dog?
Need a motion?
Do we need a motion?
Oh, we didn't have a motion.
You didn't, okay, you need a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion. We accept the bid to the Humphrey Street and LaSalle Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Just for the, just for the record.
Come back and fight us.
We're just talking about dogs, bro.
You have jokes showing up in your front.
Right. Okay, next, a banner request. Wakefield Co-op Bank from March 18 to 30, 2019 for Home Expo. Can I get a motion on that?
Move to approve the request. Second.
Questions, comments?
I just have a process, and I've already talked to Steve about it, but I just wanted to bring it up here. I love that we do the banners, it's similar to the kiosks. I would just ask that we have a formal process so that we know kind of when they're scheduled, and I don't know whether it's a form or something, but some sort of a process on the website that says, here's how you get a banner put out. If there's any costs or whatnot.
We do work with the light department, so it's kind of, you know, actually kind of goes to them and comes back to us, so we'll have to figure out a way to do that.
Okay, I would just ask that that be put on the agenda.
But there's a process, but not formalized.
Yeah, there's a process, but just something a little more, a little more formal.
Okay, so people can see it.
Yep.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? Thank you. Okay, library requests, so we have to accept and expend a gift or gifts to the library in the amount of $7,431 from various donor with thanks.
Move that we accept the gifts of $7,431.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, thank you. Okay, for appointments, we have registrars from January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019. So we have three, Steve, there.
Three for three?
Yeah.
Three for three, okay.
I move that we appoint Kathleen Bellew, Wesley Beckett, and Peter Solomon to the registrars.
Second.
Discussion? Julie?
Can we just clarify, well, for me and for Pete, perhaps, what exactly does a registrar do?
The registrars of voters actually are there during the election and kind of oversee the election, and these are the people that would be making sure there's no fraud and things like that. They'd be there during the counting center and what have you. The hanging Chad people.
Good to know, thanks.
So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none? All three are appointed. Next, we have the election town meeting workers, January 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Muriel Campbell and Cindy McGrath.
I move that we appoint both Muriel Campbell and Cindy McGrath to election town meeting workers.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, thank you, Ann, for that. Okay, next, we have license permitting. First, we have the 2019 fortune teller license renewal application, psychic reading.
I move that we approve the psychic reading license.
I knew you were going to say that, yeah.
It's just so much fun to say.
Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Which building is that, 391? I can't, I'm sorry, but I didn't actually, 391, so Brothers is 400, so 391.
Across the street then.
It's been, it's been there for a while?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a sign.
Oh, yeah, there is a sign upstairs.
Near, like, Socorro and.
Yeah, right about upstairs.
They're upstairs.
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
That's why you don't see it.
Sorry, I'm not sighted.
You're not sighted.
Clearly, you're not sighted, yes.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Okay, next.
And I might say that all of these licenses, these are some that scraggled in after the year end, and they've all been vetted, correct, Sherry? We're all set on all of them, yeah. So these are renewals.
Can I ask a general question about these? Do we have a way to do this electronically online, or are all licenses right-hand?
We just met with a vendor today to talk about making this much more streamlined for us, because right now, it's really done by Excel. It's very cumbersome and time-consuming.
It seems like it would take a lot of time and much more opportunity for human error, so I'm all in favor of getting this electronic.
And also, allow a lot of synergy between different departments, so we'll know that the building inspector's been out there, we'll know that the Board of Health has been out there, we'll know that the fire, fire has been out there, police and the fingerprinting all, we'll kind of load in, so we are working on that. You still, you can put the slate if you want.
Yeah.
Okay, slate, okay, so can I get a motion for the slate for the 2019 Common Victor license renewal applications for North Ab Diner, J Gourmet, and Honeydew Donuts?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none? Thank you. Next, the 2019 Lodging House License Renewal Application for Caritas Communities Wakefield House.
Move that we accept the Wakefield House renewal application.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none? All right, so can we do the slate as well?
Yep.
Okay. Could I get a motion for slate approval for 1 through 6 for the 2019 Class 2 license renewal applications for WW Industries, Inc., EMS Direct LLC, AC Auto LLC, Select Enterprises, Dixhorn Car, Platinum Car Center?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none? Thank you. So next is the 2019 Class 1 license renewal application for EMS Direct LLC.
Move that we accept the Class 2, Class 1, sorry, Class 1 license for EMS.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, hearing none? Okay, next, we have a one-day liquor license application for the Scholarship Foundation.
I move that we accept the one-day liquor license for the Scholarship Foundation.[1684.91]
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Are you abstaining? I'm on the board.
Well, I didn't get to say all opposed, so no matter, now you can say.
I won't be on the record as abstaining.
Okay, abstaining. I got you. Okay, so six-zero on that, one abstention, definitely not a negative. Uh, next, the Committee to Reelect Ann Santos, I think it's a great idea.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the one-day liquor license for the Committee to Reelect Ann Santos, Town Council.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Abstaining.
Abstaining, it's duly noted, six-zero, one abstention, and the Committee to Reelect Anthony Longo, another great idea.
I move that we accept the, um, the one-day liquor license, the Committee to Reelect Tony Longo to Town Council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another abstaining.
Oh, okay, another abstention. Uh, all opposed, hearing none, six-zero. Okay, uh, need a motion for the approval of minutes, regular board minutes from last year, possible vote to approve, December ten, twenty eighteen, regular board minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Did, did you amend it?
Um, yeah, I have a, did we, is it over for discussion? Yeah, somebody just moved, okay, sorry.
I have time.
I just had, I had a very, um, quick, under the matters not anticipated by the chair within forty-eight hours, it may have been my mistake, but, um, I had mentioned a solar event that's coming up, and it's this appears January twenty-seventh, but it's actually January twenty-third.
Okay.
So I just asked for that correction to be made.
Okay, so.
As amended, as amended, yep.
As amended. So can we, do we need another motion?
Nope.
So with the amended piece, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, thank you. Okay, back to you, Julie, with the warrant, you were signing for warrants.
I signed a lot of warrants about a week ago, um, and I think, um, what was notable and what I'm realizing as I'm seeing trends is, I'm really impressed that the town, I think, does make a real attempt to purchase locally, um, where possible, and I think that, you know, thanks to to Steve and his departments for making that. I'm sure it's not always possible, but a lot of times, we, um, we are, you know, able to use local vendors.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, um, so we have the next board meeting for January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, seven P M, WCAT Studio, Tom invites us back. Um, now, matters not anticipated by the chair per summer than forty-eight hours of meeting, maybe?
Sure, thanks, Peter. So, uh, just a couple of updates, you know, it's a new year, so I just wanted to take a moment and just talk about some of the, uh, priorities of the groups that I'm liaison to. Um, the library is coming up with their five-year strategic plan. Uh, Steve sits on that committee, I sit on that committee. Um, we had our first meeting last week. It's actually really exciting if you have ideas about the library and what it's going to look like in five years, um, reach out to Catherine McDonald or anyone that's on the committee. Um, likewise, the Lake Bench Committee had its first meeting, uh, actually had two meetings, had a meeting indoors, and then we met outdoors on Saturday morning when it was eleven, uh, eleven degrees outside, and we walked around and looked at the benches. I'm really excited about that committee coming, um, back to this group for our policy recommendations in a few months, once we've done that. Um, uh, one more, looking at things, uh, for the year, I am the liaison to the Human Rights Commission, um, they are having their third annual MLK Unity Event on, uh, Monday, a week from now, ten A M, at the Galvin Middle School, um, really great event, so if everyone can make it down there, um, you'd really enjoy it. Um, and just, and and this is, um, this is just, uh, to remember to keep our neighbors and our friends in your, uh, thinking about them, so, uh, the the furlough's gone on for over three weeks now. Um, just to remind everyone, we have a food pantry, as was talked about earlier, um, in town, if you can give donations and chicken on neighbors, um, it is much appreciated to keep Wakefield strong in our neighbors', um, in our hearts.
Great, great, thank you. I can't wait for the bench committee to report back.
Yes, and and to clarify, it is around the lake and on our public parks. Um, those are the our two, uh, uh, those are the areas that will be explored.
Right, not just the lake, right?
Yes, but not, and not the ones on Main Street or downtown.
Got you. Mr. DiNaco.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Um, the only things that I would like to, um, discuss would be, um, a continuation of your thought with the parking committee and, uh, moving forward on putting a package together, uh, for our meeting on the twenty-eighth. Um, I look forward to, uh, making several comments on that as what was brought up from people who attended the meetings. Um, just a quick reminder to people that we have, um, a couple of, um, activities coming up in the near future. Uh, we have, um, on the twenty-sixth, we have two, actually, we have trivia night and we also have, um, the, uh, barbecue at the, in January for the Fourth of July Parade Committee at the Elks. So, uh, there's two activities that night, big choice of which one to go to, but, um, if you can, try to sneak in both, the boat well worth it. Um, we have a couple of, uh, external activities that we can also participate, um, and look forward to being at Mr. Longo's reception. Uh, other than that, that's it, my friend.
Okay, and that was the twenty-fourth, I think, Tony, wasn't it?
I have no comment.
Okay, um, Julie?
Um, thank you. Kind of in the same sphere of it's a new year, um, and what the groups that I liaison with are up to, um, DPW, we all know that Mr. Stinson is sadly retiring, um, and so there's going to be a lot of changes there, and I look forward to working, um, with them through that and through the budget period. Um, and with the light department, they recently completed a customer survey, and I think there'll be some interesting information coming out of that in the coming months. Um, along a similar vein, there, uh, and I and I hope at the next meeting, we'll be discussing a environment committee to, um, really take on some environmental issues that come up really kind of, uh, across departments and and across the town, so look forward to discussing that at the next meeting in a similar vein. Um, the Sierra Club recently invited all elected officials, municipal officials from the North Shore to a meeting that happened on Saturday, and Maureen, um, and I attended, as did the, um, Chair of the Light Department Commission, very fascinating, um, about thirty-five municipal, um, officials were there talking about different state programs, um, that we can tap and really best practices, and that will be an ongoing effort, and I look forward to reporting on that. And I think just, you know, not that I I know I talk about environment a lot, but I think I really believe that with a lot of the economic development and the Main Street activities that we're going to be doing in this year, that there's going to be a great synergy, um, that we can have from both environment and economic development, so that's, oh, and January twenty-sixth, there's another thing happening on January twenty-sixth, the Linden Tree is having their annual, um, potpourri where, um, young or newer, um, Falcon Bluegrass artists come in, and the audience gets to vote on who is the best, and then they come back at a later time to perform, and, um, Linden Tree had a sellout crowd at their last event, and I encourage everybody to visit, um, that coffee house, which is in the basement of the, um, UC Church.
So kind of like a battle of the bands, right?
It is, it's a folk battle of the bands.
Wow, sounds good, thank you.
Just a few things, happy new year, everyone. The, um, as Paula mentioned, the twenty-sixth is a big night here in town. We have a couple of different things going on. One of them, um, is the the indoor barbecue that supports the Independence Day Parade at the Elks, um, and at around the same time is also the Scholarship Foundation's, um, fundraiser trivia night at, uh, Saint Joe's in in the hall, so please check out one or both if you can. Uh, you may have noticed some activity, some folks downtown, that will continue to be the case. VHB is in the process of surveying, I was actually out walking the dog the other day and and met up with one of our contacts there and was talking through that project, so that's underway, and hopefully the, um, the snow will hold out and the weather will hold out, and, um, that's the first portion of what we have approved at town meeting back in the fall, um, so that that work is well underway. Uh, it's basically a lot of site surveying work right now going on and the like, so that's exciting. Um, and finally, for, I I know we have a strong community, we have a lot of really talented people, and I'm asking for anyone that has any coaching experience in dodgeball.
We desperately need your help.
We're desperately, so I'd be interested to meet you this year, so, uh, just just reach out to any one of the seven of us, and I I can guarantee we'd we'd happily bring you on board.
This is a bad.
They brought in ringers.
It's a little for me, because I'm not listening.
So I am liaison to the fire department, and we recently, with Steve, had some great meetings about, um, things that will happen to, I think, move the fire department forward in in the coming year, and, um, met with the the chief, as well as a lot of his, um, the captains, um, who are all excited about, um, you know, doing something, I think, to to really bring the fire department along. Um, also, uh, the the skating, the hockey rink is not dead. I was at the hockey fundraiser on Friday night, and we had to answer that question many times. Um, uh, we got no bites at our RFP, um, but we've gone back, not to the drawing board, we're making some tweaks. Steve has worked really hard with the, um, closely with the VOKE, because it's going to be a joint, um, endeavor, um, they are on board, so I think we'll be coming back with, um, sending that out to bid again, um, with some great ideas, so hopefully, that's a project that we'll keep, um, we'll keep alive. All set.
Okay, thank you, Anne. John?
Uh, I am liaison to the school department, and I know there's a lot of disappointment about the new high school, but I did talk to Superintendent Lyons at length concerning the accreditation of the science department within the current high school, and I'm not going to steal any of his thunder, but there will be an official statement coming out sometime very soon, so those of you concerned parents at home, stay tuned for that, and I'm not going to rehash anything else that was stated tonight, but, uh, there is a snowstorm coming Saturday into Sunday, so if you have a neighbor that is unable to shovel or, you know, move their car or clean their car off, lend a hand, you know, we are all this together. I'm good, Peter.
Okay, thank you, Johnny. Steve?
Uh, well, first of all, Counselor Nambrowski has told me there will be no snow.
He doesn't really say that.
Because of what the budget spent, he did say that.
We like rain.
We like rain.
Just not too much.
Um, I think it was Patches McCarthy in the in the film Dodgeball that was the coach, I think it was Patches McCarthy, and and part of his training mechanism was he threw wrenches.
Oh, good, let's do that.
So that that might be what we.